To the May, May, whoop, I'm going to go back in time. June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, Twalton City Council meeting. I will now call it to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, led tonight by Counsel Reyes.
Hi, everyone. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counsel Reyes. Second item up is a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives due to COVID- nineteen, and that'd be led by Counsel Brooks.
Hi, everybody. I have a little, today there was zero reported deaths in Oregon, which was, which was a really nice number. So far, we've had, we've lost two thousand seven hundred and thirty people to coronavirus here in our state and more than five hundred and ninety-nine thousand people across the United States. And for those we've lost and those that are suffering, I ask you to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Brooks. Tonight, we have one announcement, and that's the announcement about our National Pollinator Week presentation and a proclamation. I'm assuming that's from our parks folks. I see Ross.
It is me, Brandon.
And there's Rich, and there's Brandon, all right.
Right, so let me share my screen here.
Yeah, and Brandon Gill is Vice Chair of Twalton Parks Advisory Committee.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so hopefully you can see this. So Pollinator Week, it is June twenty-first to twenty-seventh, and part of Pollinator Week is fulfilling our requirement for the Bee City USA commitment. Bee City USA is something that we're, that Twalton is a part of, and that is a part of the Parks Committee. We are the, as Beth likes to call us, the Trees and Bees people. So this is the bees portion. We talked about the trees a little bit earlier in our tree, tree Jose. So plantings, what have we done? We've planted a lot of pollinator things, a lot of flowers, a lot of trees. Through five plantings, fifteen hundred pollinator plants planted, and that's six hundred volunteer hours out of two hundred people, which is great. Some of the community benefits, we ensure survival of vital animal species. We address pest problems with fewer pesticides and herbicides, and we heighten the awareness of biological diversity. So some pollinator facts, I won't read those to you, but I do want to bring to attention that we do see mostly daytime pollinators, and that's the ones that people mostly pay attention to. So we have the bees and the hummingbirds and the other pretty ones that we like to, that we like to pay attention to. But I would also like to bring to attention the not-so, not-so-celebrated pollinators, let's call them. So we have the black fly, we have a mosquito, there are some beetles. There's actually a beetle that is in the yucca plant, and it's the only pollinator for the yucca plant, which is very interesting. So we have some not-celebrated pollinators during the day. There's also the night shift, where we have our bats and the moths. And moths are very big pollinators during the evening, just because of their, their furry bodies and getting in there and getting those night flowers pollinated. So what can we do to help these pollinators? Well, we've already done a big portion of it during the day, which is reducing the amount of herbicides and pesticides that are used and target the, the, the non-desirable plants and keep the desirable plants. Also, during the evening, there's a potential for looking at dark skies and dark parks to make sure that those moths, who are normally attracted to light, are now able to go and do their duties, and the bats can also eat them up. So, you know, we're doing double duty on that one. So, and what can we do? Get involved. Look at the Backyard Habitat Certification Program. Friends of Trees is always putting on sorts of plantings throughout Twalton. There's a Pollinator Garden, really cool if you haven't been there. And then there's also the Pollinator website to get more information about how you can participate in pollination and making sure that we're providing the best possible environment for our pollinators. That's all that I have. I'll toss it back to you to do the proclamation.
Thanks, Brandon. I was not aware of the less celebrated pollinators. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah.
So with the proclamation, that will be, we're flipping around. Counsel Brooks has been the advocate for bee cities and all things bees, and she has the honor. She's got her little bee antennas on. She will read the proclamation.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Brandon, so much for your volunteerism with our city and for the great presentation. And I too like hearing about the less celebrated pollinators. And here we are with the proclamation. So declaring the week of June twenty-first through June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, as National Pollinator Week in the city of Twalton. Whereas pollinators, such as thousands of species of bees, are essential partners in producing much of our food supply. And whereas pollinators provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, diverse ecosystems in towns and cities. And whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities. And whereas the city of Twalton manages parks, public landscaping, and other public lands that includes greenways, natural areas, and wildlife habitats. And whereas the city of Twalton provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Twalton, Oregon, that the city of Twalton designates the week of June twenty-first through twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, as National Pollinator Week in the city of Twalton. All our urge to recognize this observance and support efforts to protect and plant pollinators. The city of Twalton supports Bee City USA certified affiliates, certified affiliate status in their recognition of the value of pollinators by proclaiming June twenty-first through twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, as National Pollinator Week in Twalton, introduced and adopted this fourteenth day of June, twenty twenty-one. And thanks for all your leadership, Ross Hoover, and everyone else that works in the, and volunteers in the Parks Department, which really has taken this on in a great way. And I know many have heard, but there are some new people on council that I became very concerned around pesticide use, especially around brain health in my field, my study, and am concerned with brain health, especially in our kids. And the more that we've worked on this, the more that I've had the opportunity to learn and also engage in the community and some planting events through the Twalton Sustainability Network and encouraging other cities to join us to be a pollinator corridor. So I really appreciate, it was the first, one of the first things I ever did as a counselor, and I'm still really proud, and I also appreciate and have kept my antenna. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Brooks. And again, thank you, Brandon, and all the members of Teapark for taking on the Bee City and keeping it active here in the community. Neighbors nursing communities, when we did our plant handout about a month or so ago, it's a blur, we gave out flowering plants also to help with pollination, you know, of the vegetables, all the stuff we're trying to grow also to assist in Bee City status here in the city. So we gave out quite a few plants also, in addition to our normal vegetable starts. So thank you again. All right. Moving on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. As I was coming into the meeting, I heard that Susan Noack and Beth Ditman are co-teaming or tag-teaming a public comment, so the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Frank, and Counsel. I'm pleased to be here tonight. My name is Susan Noack. I'm a twenty-year resident of Twalton. My two hats I wear, I chair the Twalton Chamber of Board Directors and I'm Chair of the Twalton Aging Task Force. Tonight, I'm here chairing myself. I'm speaking just for me. I'm joined here tonight by Beth Ditman, Chair of Teapark, and via email, Ben Bowman, Chair of the Tiger Twalton School District Board of Directors. We are here this evening to propose a change to the city's charter regarding term limits. As you know, the current term limits provision, Section twelve A, provides for a maximum of twelve years of elected service on the council in any twenty-year period, as adapted by the voters in November of twenty sixteen. While we, as a community, have experienced the benefits of term limits, it is becoming very clear that the burden of term limits have the potential to harm Twalton by limiting the eligibility of our current mayor and especially all future mayors, mayors, to serve just a single term after eight years as counselor. We understand being a counselor or mayor is a very difficult undertaking, especially as a volunteer. You spend countless hours learning the city government, serving on regional committees, managing periodic crises, as well as complex ongoing matters like the Salt Creek I- five tolling, I-two-of-five tolling, transportation, housing, and possible urban renewal development. You become specialists in, in the environment, in important privacy areas such as water management, the environment, parks, and open space. The relationship and knowledge built on, up over your terms in office alone allow you to serve effectively as a mayor in your third term on council. A perfect example of this progression and the need for the change is our current mayor, who as a council for eight years and now mayor for two and a half, has done a great job representing Twalton. He has forged tremendous relationships with many other elected officials, including our state and federal representatives, as well as on a local level with our chamber, our business community, our school district, and our community residents. He, these contacts have brought many benefits to Twalton, including funds from county, state, and federal levels for transportation projects, park and parks improvement, and planning for future developments. Yet, under the current term limits, he is not eligible to serve for another term as a mayor. And now I'd like to hand it over to Beth Ditman.
Thank you. With all due respect to Mayor Buegenik, however, this issue is larger than honoring just his individual service and allowing him to potentially run for another term as mayor. The change we're asking you to make will affect the quality of Twalton's governance far into the future by allowing a counselor, who's been seasoned over eight years of service, to be eligible to serve for two consecutive terms as mayor. The specific change we're proposing, we will send to Nicole in an email after this, but it is, as Susan already mentioned, Section twelve A of City Council Term Limits. Under our normal circumstances, obviously, our group would walk around to neighborhoods, attend large events, and obtain the signatures on an initiative petition. As we're all aware, however, we are not operating under our normal circumstances. And even though we're hopefully experiencing the beginning of the end of the pandemic, many people rightfully remain reluctant to open their doors to strangers or attend large events. In this context, gathering our two hundred, or two thousand five hundred signatures would be difficult, if not impossible. Because of this difficulty, we're asking you, the council, to consider using your powers under the Twalton Municipal Code, Chapter one dash twenty-four dash zero-two-zero, to refer this proposed charter amendment to the ballot for the May two thousand twenty-two election. In the spirit, however, of representing community voice, as Susan mentioned, we do provide you with a letter of support for this proposal from a fellow citizen and public servant, Ben Bowman. I'll read that letter now. Mayor Buegenik and members of City Council, my name is Ben Bowman. I'm an elected member of the Tiger Twalton School Board, but I'm writing only for myself this evening. I would like to offer my support for the proposed change to the city charter. Over the last two years, in the midst of multiple crises from pandemic to wildfires, I was able to see how critical relationships are for accessing information and resources in a timely fashion for local governments. Being able to pick up the phone to call key officials and colleagues in other jurisdictions to understand constantly changing dynamics was an important part of the job of locally elected officials. While this function is especially valuable during crises, it's also true in more normal circumstances. Having a mayor that's deeply engaged and well-connected to other officials, nearby jurisdictions, and relevant organizations benefits Twalton's residents and small businesses tremendously. In today's policymaking environment, cities cannot simply go it alone. Most of the major issues affecting residents' quality of life require collaboration with public partners. Land use planning, transportation, housing, and homelessness, environmental protection, education, and more require collaboration and consultation with state and federal government, the counties, neighboring cities, metro, triment, the school district, and more. Then, of course, there's the private groups, the League of Cities, the West Side Economic Alliance, the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, business organizations, and more. That's a lot of ground to cover and people and processes to get to know in just four years as mayor. The proposed language would give Twalton a competitive advantage in the regional affairs by providing more time for the mayor to first build relationships across the county and metro area, second, gain status and experience in local and regional groups and committees, and third, better understand the complex and oftentimes overlapping jurisdictions and decision-making processes in our community. I encourage the council to support this proposal. Sincerely, Ben Bowman. In closing, we want to emphasize that this proposed change to the charter would, in our opinion, be in the best interest of all residents in Twalton in ensuring that a person who takes the time and effort to become a seasoned leader as a counselor over eight years can continue that service for two consecutive terms as mayor. The proposal respects the term limit policy that was adopted by voters in two thousand sixteen, while making a narrow but important improvement to that policy. We thank you for your time this evening.
Well, thank you, Susan, and thank you, Beth. We'll take that under consideration. Thanks for attending tonight. Are there any other folks who would like to participate in public comment tonight?
Mayor via Zoom, we also have Patricia Parsons.
Ms. Parsons, good to see you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good to see you all as well. My comments tonight are all around guns, as you probably will know. Tonight was an especially loud explosion in our neighborhood, which caused me to call the police. I have decided, as a citizen, that it would be very... Well, how can I even say this? I, I can't sit by any longer and not call this out as to what it is. I cannot tell you that I know where the sound of gunfire is coming from. All I know is that the sound of gunfire in a neighborhood is not healthy. It's not healthy to our children. It's not healthy to our adults. No vet suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder can live in our communities safely. Counselor Brooks, you called out just tonight that you felt that the well-being of our children and their minds growing up is very important. I will say to you that we are raising an entire population, an entire population of children to be complacent around the sound of gunfire. This is dangerous at best. So I want to just let everybody know that I am getting ready to send a letter to the press. I want to give everybody a heads up that this is forthcoming. I will be sending out mailers to our neighborhoods, asking for any, anybody who wants to participate to let me know. I'll prepare a website and hopefully attack this at a grassroots effort. But as I move forward in this effort, there's two things that struck me as kind of odd. One, I, I was walking in the park the other day, and I saw that Oregon Rifle Works is a proud supporter of our youth baseball. And I started to wonder, what, what in the world? This is so off-putting at best, at best, to have an ammunition and rifle company support our children and hang an advertisement in our parks. Do we have no conscience? Do we have no sense of sensibility around this? I find this to be utterly horrible. It's just absolutely awful. Why wouldn't we have a vaping shop and a pot shop and the local alcohol store hang their banners in support as well? We are absolutely allowing advertisement directly to our youths. Then the last thing that I want to point out, and I, I will continue to attend as many council meetings as possible to just drill this home. But in looking at the comprehensive plan for Twalton, I see that on map eight dash four, there are some beautiful proposed planned multi-use trails. One of them cuts right up to the edge of the gun range. Now, I would just ask us to think about that for just a moment. In my own neighborhood today, in Ibach, the sound was so horrific, I really wondered if there was an active shooter down the street. And Cindy, I think you can attest to that. You, you're just blocks from me.
It was really bad.
It was really bad. Why would we have a path go right underneath the gun range? What are we thinking as a city? What are we thinking in terms of our planning? I would propose that we plan something entirely different and plan on mitigating this horrific sound. The last thing that I'm going to say, and I'll make this very brief. Law enforcement from all over our region is at this gun range more days out of the month than they're not, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two days a month. I would like to know, who has these contracts? Can we please have these made public? Why are we paying our tax dollars to have our peace officers, who, who are here to keep the peace and protect our citizens, practice at a private range where their first rule of thumb, their first rule in their rulebook is you have to be a member of the NRA? That's a rhetorical question, but I'd like our city council to think about it. And I, I would like this to go on record, that I would like to see the contracts between our law enforcement and this pub, this private range made public. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up, we are, we do continue to look at this. City staff and myself will be visiting the gun range in the near future to look at what's going on and hear, you know, to address some of your concerns, Ms. Parsons. I also continue to be in contact with Representative Prusak. She and I discuss the gun range quite a bit and, you know, your efforts, you know, for sound mitigation. And I'm also speaking with our Washington County Commissioners. So I appreciate you bringing this back up. We are still working on it, and I know it's been painfully slow. But with COVID coming to an end here, we'll finally be able to go out to the range and see and hear what's going on and what, what they are proposing for mitigation, and we'll circle back with you. But yes, do please continue to attend city council meetings.
I, I very much appreciate that. I, I do want to let you know that I received a very odd email from who I believe is the president of that gun range. And his email was quite covert, which I found to be equally off-putting. He emailed me and said, basically, as a community member and someone who is interested in, I'll just read it. He says, "Please send updated information about your organization and what cause you represent." And he, he goes on to say that I'm interested in finding, I'm interested in... What does he say here? Bear with me just a moment here. He wants to know what I'm all about, which I thought was really very bizarre. So I did write him back, and I told him that I'm interested in finding ways to mitigate the sound of gunfire in a neighborhood and that I felt that it didn't belong and that it was very unhealthy for all citizens who live here. I, I felt that that was a very weird email to receive anonymously. He didn't own up who he, he is. Of course, I Googled him. It's, it's quite odd, but thank you. Thank you for, for your time.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on public comment?
That is all we have signed up, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. These are items considered routine. They'll be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like them removed tonight and heard separately. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of four items. Consider, consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Consideration of approval of late liquor license renewal, twenty twenty-one. Consideration of Resolution Number five-five-five-one dash twenty-one, authorizing changes to the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one adopted budget. And finally, item number four, consideration of Resolution Number five-five-five-three dash twenty-one, awarding the contract for the construction of the Martin Ozzy Avenue at Sagert Street Interchange, like intersection, sorry, improvement project part of the Twalton Moving Forward Bond Program. Would any member of the council like an item removed from consent and addressed later tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussions on the motion? Seeing no hands, Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Pratt? Counselor Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel President Grimes?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. All right. Public hearings. I have only one item in public hearings tonight. It's consideration of Resolution Number five-five-five-zero dash two-one, declaring the city's election to receive state revenue sharing funds during fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And I think that's a Mr. Hudson subject.
Good evening, excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Yes, it is a subject of mine, so I will be giving the staff report for the public hearing this evening. We are asking the council to adopt the resolution after conducting this required public hearing. A little bit about what this hearing is about. We, in order to receive state shared revenues, the city must do three things. The first is to levy property taxes in a prior year. We must pass a resolution approving participation in the state shared revenue program. And the third is to hold two public hearings. The first was held before the Budget Committee on the Possible Use of These Funds, and that was held on May twenty-fifth. The second required public hearing under ORS two-twenty-one dot seven-seven-zero is before the City Council this evening on the proposed use of these funds. We are estimated to receive four hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and that is a portion of the state liquor taxes that we receive. The revenue is not restricted, and we have programmed it into the budget for general city operations. The cigarette tax, marijuana tax, gas taxes, and the other portion of the liquor taxes are not covered by this public hearing. At that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Don? Okay, pretty quiet. Do I have a motion?
Seeing no questions, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number five-five-five-zero dash two-one.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve Resolution Number five-five-five-zero dash two-one. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Counsel Pratt? Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes? Shout it out. Counsel Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel President Grimes?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye also. It's unanimous. All right. General Business, item number one, Community Engagement Update. General business, item number one, community engagement update. I think that's Megan and Betsy. There they are. They just popped on. Welcome.
Hello. So I am pleased to introduce Betsy Rodriguez-Ruth, who is our community engagement coordinator. Betsy has been with the city for just under four years, if I'm correct. She's the first person to hold this role, so much of what you see in our community engagement programs she had a hand in. Tonight's presentation, she's going to talk a little bit about our community engagement program, but in particular, our outreach to our Spanish-speaking community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Betsy.
Thank you, Megan. And Megan's going to help share the presentation. But, buena tarde. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Betsy Rodriguez-Ruth. Thank you, Megan. If you pronounce that correctly. So my position is in the City Manager's office, and I mainly lead our community engagement efforts. I mainly lead our community engagement program, which includes working with the CIO program, the Tualatinos Group, networking with our community organizations like Tiger Child and School District, the Forlán Free Clinic, Community Action, and many more. Other departments also take on community engagement efforts throughout the city, and I provide support to them on those efforts as well. But today, I will discuss how we have built the structure of engaging our community and give you an update on what we've been up to for the past year and a half. And even though our community engagement work is to engage the whole community, tonight's presentation will focus on our Latino community engagement. I'm sorry, I'm going to take my headphones off. So we conduct community engagement because it's important to the organization to stay connected to the community and know if we are serving our community well, as well as council has identified it as a priority. As you can see, community engagement comes up repeatedly in your 2021 council priorities. Latino community engagement is important because that's how we learn what our Latino and Hispanic communities' needs and priorities are. We listen to the issues that are most prevalent to the specific community, share resources to build trust, and then seek alignment between issues that the Latino community is facing. I believe this step-by-step approach, slowing down the process to listen and learn first, takes time, but I believe it yields to much success. So how we've managed to stay connected, I love the screenshots. Those are so hard to get. So how we've managed to stay connected in 2020 and 2021, like the rest of the world, staying connected has been challenging and tested us in many ways, but it's also provided an opportunity for us to try, like, different engagement approaches, and it's led to better listening and in turn, learning to be led by the community. During the worst of the pandemic, the Latino community's capacity was very limited, as they were focused on their families and immediate resources. A lot of them, you know, were struggling, lost their jobs and were ill, and so it was a really hard time for the Latino community. And so they let us know that they were struggling and they needed us to figure out how to stay connected to them. And I'm happy to report that I believe that we achieved that. So one of the ways we stayed connected to the community was through now the Tualatinos Group. I believe some of you know that, have heard that name already. So even though it's a new name, it's not a new group. So they were previously known as the Diversity Task Force, but they felt that this new name represents them better, as the previous name was a little confusing. And I can't take credit for the new name. It was the group they came up with it. So Tualatinos is a combination of Tuolatin and Latino, which is, I think, super clever and so unique to Tuolatin that we could combine that. We've actually joked about getting Tualatinos tattoos. So if you see anybody out with them, it's not a new gang, it's just this group. So another way we stayed connected to the Latino community is through a group called the Pili Group. And so a little bit about their name. So the Pili Group name comes from one of their founders. Her name was Pilad. Unfortunately, she passed away last year, and they changed their name to the Pili Group to honor her. We actually featured her in our social media Women's History Month, and they were very touched and grateful that we did that. So who the Pili Group is, who they are, they're a group of Latino women, they're Spanish-speaking from our community. So I connected with them at Viva Tuolatin a couple of years ago, and we have been cultivating a relationship with them ever since. They meet every Saturday currently at the Tuolatin Community Park. They meet every week. If you're ever out there, please stop by and say hi. They're super friendly and really want to meet more city staff and more staff. They would love to meet you guys. They usually doing Roomba before they start the class, so if you see a group doing Roomba, go ahead and join them. They're super fun. And so one of the many ways that we've supported this group is helping them set up a Facebook group where we share updates. All the content is in Spanish, and their group is growing rapidly. I've also, we've also facilitated conversations with the chief before, and connected them with the library, so they're really active and growing. So next, I would like to share about another community engagement tool we recently completed, which some of you participated, so thank you to council who participated in it. But a little background of like where this idea came from. A group from the Latino community reached out to me with questions on like how to access staff and how to bring up questions and concerns. And as I presented different options to them, one of them was to reach out to council, to the mayor, and it became clear that there was a need for a video on how-to. And so, and as you know, this platform can be a little intimidating to them, so we came up with a way to explain this process in a fun video. So we have since posted the video on all our social media platforms. We've shared it with our community partners, and I'd like to play it for you now. It's only four minutes, so short.
¿Tiene comentarios, preguntas? Oh, en K two days. Quisime mostrales cómo dirigirse al consejo con estos sencillos pasos.
Moving on, we now move into the section of the agenda where public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone who would like to address the city council, this would be the appropriate time.
Looks like it's not going to keep playing. We can send out the link.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for all the councils who helped participate in that. It was a lot of fun, and we do plan to make another updated version once we're all meeting in person again, so I hope you're all practicing your Spanish, because we're going to do 2.0 of that coming soon. So another tool I would like to talk about is another crucial way we stay connected to the Latino community is through the city's Somos Tuolatin Facebook group, which was actually suggested by Council Reyes back in 2020, and so then, which led us to create the group. So we share content only in Spanish, and I manage the page, and I'm really excited to share the feedback from the community that has been overwhelmingly positive. When there was so much misinformation about COVID, the community shared with us that Somos Tuolatin was where they were going for their trusted source. Some information was not getting translated in time, and so we had established that relationship with them, you know, pre-COVID, and so it was so great that, you know, we were sharing a lot of content, and that's where they were going to get their information and sharing it to the community. So that was great. So other initiatives, lastly, that I'd like to share more about, more initiatives that other departments are leading, that I've provided support on. This is actually my favorite, and I'm super proud of. I'd like to give a big shout-out to our Parks and Rec Department for helping solve an equity issue at a Tuolatin park. The community reached out to us and letting us know that they were having issues accessing the fields. So after many meetings, conversations, brainstorm meetings, some comfortable meetings, now kids from the Stone Ridge Neighborhood Community, they now have a permitted, a weekly scheduled time to play on the field. And not only do they have now permitted time, the Parks Department also purchased these goalposts for them amongst some equipment. So that was by far one of my favorite initiatives to provide support on, and I believe really has helped our relationship with the Latino community. So I also visited the Latino-owned businesses to do the Latino business outreach in the city. I helped facilitate their applications for the business brands, which led to several of our Latino businesses receiving funds. And even though this was one of, like, a really heartbreaking experience, because for me to see how the businesses were struggling and the fear that they had to lose their businesses, I really enjoyed connecting with them and providing the support. They're very grateful that the city took time to reach out to them with someone who spoke their language. We translated the application to Spanish, and we provided a lot of examples for them, and so that was really great. And we've continued, and we plan to continue that relationship with them. Tuolatin Moving Forward, Megan went through the efforts earlier, but we've done a lot of outreach to our Spanish-speaking community, making sure that they're well-informed of what Tuolatin Moving Forward is and providing all the information in Spanish. Also, the COVID-19 vaccine clinic that some of you were at, that was like, that was funny because it was like working in a command center. So me and other staff, we just stopped what we were doing, and we solely focused on getting information out, which led to some of the folks from the Tualatinos Group volunteering at the clinic. And then they ended up getting their vaccine there because there was some leftover, and so they were super happy. And we're telling everyone in the community about how great that was. And lastly, another department I'd like to highlight is our Public Works Department. So they recently had two separate projects that they were doing in the Stone Ridge Neighborhood Community, and they collaborated with members of the Tualatinos Group that live in the Stone Ridge Neighborhood to give the community a heads-up before they started the project. They then followed up by attending one of the Tualatinos meetings to get feedback on how the project went, what they could have done different or better. And I'd just like to share a quote from Miliza, who is on the Tualatinos Group, shared. She said, "I want to thank Gio de Paz, Gio works for our Public Works Department, and the city for being so kind and keeping us informed with what is happening in our community. It makes us feel recognized as part of the city of Tuolatin." So in conclusion, I'd like to say that I'm a big advocate for sincere and honest community engagement, and I believe that the city of Tuolatin provides that for our Latino community, and I look forward to continuing this work, so much appreciated.
Perfect. Thank you, Betsy, and thank you, Megan. Questions for Betsy and or Megan? Council Saco, then Council Brooks?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the city for investing in this new role, and I meet with Betsy on a monthly basis, and she's doing a great job. And I just want to say thank you, Betsy, for all your hard work and all your creative outreach that you're doing. And I follow the Facebook page, and it's amazing, and I just wanted to say huge kudos to the city and to Betsy, and I just look forward to seeing what more you do in the future. And I'm just so thrilled to be able to have those conversations with you monthly, Betsy, and stay informed. Keep doing what you're doing. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Council Saco.
I too wanted to say thank you, and we worked together on the schools program for integrating and doing a conference, and that's when I got to know you better. And I too follow the Somos page and like to see, especially during this time of COVID, how we're helping keep our community informed in such an important time that can really help save lives and keep everybody well and healthy, and also your work supporting Jonathan, I'm sure, with the outreach for the businesses is really appreciated. And I guess my question, oh, and thank you for stretching me because I took five years of Spanish, but that was a very long time ago. And so that's always good to feel a little stretched. And I guess my biggest question is, is there, I think we're doing really great with community outreach, but is there, are there consistent themes of what people in the community would, where we would still like to grow, like a priority or two that you hear consistently that we can still make, you know, have room to grow?
Well, I think that we are providing that. I think the biggest thing is access, access to information of where those opportunities are. We learn, the more I'm out in the community and having conversations with people, the more I learn where that is. So I think we are reaching that by being accessible and having a staff that's bilingual and that can connect to them, and then we work hard to try to like do cultural engagement. So I think just working hard to open the door to hear what those priorities are. So I think that helps meet that.
Yeah. I appreciate that, and I know, I just feel that this council's very interested in hearing from all the parts of the community and especially this part of the community. So I think it's just really important to keep pushing on that, that we really want to hear from people. We want to know what people think. And I know that you've given great examples about how we accommodate and advocate for what the needs are, but our doors are really open. So we continue to want to listen and hear from the members of the community. And I just really appreciate the work you're doing. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Brooks.
Any other questions, comments for Betsy? Counsel Reyes.
No, I just want to say thank you, Betsy, for everything. I commend you. I remember when we first started this, this, when you started at the job and we met for coffee. So four years later, it's just amazing, all the things you've done. And, and what I really like about you, Betsy, is that you really do take feedback very graciously. So you're not like, you know, so the feedback, you know, there's some people that are a little reserved and you're not like that. You're open to feedback. You want to hear from, from not just us, but the community. And I really have enjoyed getting to know you and attending the To Latinos meetings and getting to the community. Thank you for even introducing me to them because like I have seen them around, but not like when you're in those meetings, you actually become like family. And I really have enjoyed that. So thank you so much for, for bringing that into this, into these meetings. And I look forward to more things. Let me know how I can help still, you know, you know, my abilities and just let me know. And I will continue to support this group. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Reyes, and thank you for all your support.
Any other comments? All right. Well, yeah, Betsy, again, yeah, thank you for all your effort. I too remember when you started and you're doing a terrific job and continue on. And as Counsel Brooks mentioned, look forward to, you know, engagement of all folks in the community. We're focusing on the Latino community, but we've got other folks of BIPOC that I also like, want to get involved and, you know, let them know they're part of the community just as well as everyone else. And we want to hear from them, have them participate.
Yes, of course, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Well, thank you, Betsy. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you very much. Buenas noches.
Buenas noches. Item number two, consideration of ordinance number 5549-21, establishing a core area parking district, CAPD tax rate for fiscal year 2021, 2022. And there's Clay. Clay is the man with the core area, so I'm assuming this is a Clay conversation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's nice to see you. For the record, my name is Clay Reynolds, Maintenance Services Manager for the city. And one of the hats I wear currently is liaison to the core area district, which brings us here each year to come and briefly update, give you an update on the core area. Probably the biggest news is, other than the tax rate that we propose each year, is that next year Jonathan Taylor Economic Development Manager will be presenting. One of the things I recognize this last year, year and a half, is I don't know as much about what's going on as people would like to find out. So I think by bringing Jonathan in, that's going to help close that gap a little bit. I'll still be involved in the budget, maintenance, those type of things. Otherwise, you'll be hearing from Jonathan, much more pleasant voice, better speaker. And so it should be good. To turn to the main point that I'm here, obviously, last year with COVID, there wasn't a lot of parking demand. I think that's going to change this coming years. It'll be interesting to see what happens with that. And with that, a few years ago, we started to adopt, looking at the municipal cost index for proposing the rate increase based on the prior year's numbers. And this year, what the recommendation was from the core area board was to, to raise it with the tax to the point, 0.65% this year to stay up with that cost index increase for the year. And that's the reason I wanted to bring that, bring that forth tonight to see if we could get approval for that ordinance. That's where that comes from. It will be interesting to see what happens in the coming years, given what's happening with inflation the last few months. That rate is based on the last calendar year, so January through the end of December was the 0.65, or the 0.65, excuse me. And to see if anybody had any questions I could answer.
Questions for Clay? Counsel Pratt.
Clay, I think during the core area parking we discussed, but like the biggest hit to the business is fairly small, if I remember correctly, for this increase.
Correct. The, probably the largest increase, it'll be about $45 right in there for the highest. And the city of 12 is one of those. There's just a few that are kind of a nap percentage. On the average, across the board, it'll be about $2 on the average across from everybody. That'll be what the increase is for most people.
Other questions for Clay? I just want to bring up, so people know what we're talking about because we didn't say what. So the members of the core area, those businesses that are in the core area pay per parking slot, or we call the core area parking district. And so for this upcoming fiscal year, we're proposing that they pay $174.15 per slot. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a, it's a tax for the business. So the way that works is that it's not for a spot, it's for, based on, it's a complicated formula. It's based on the size of the square footage of the business, what kind of business, what kind of traffic they bring into it, and they take that percentage. And then that's how they calculate the tax rate. And that's probably the fairest way to try to make it based on business, based on the amount of usage. And yeah, it seems, it seems to be fair. I'd have to get finance to bring in and tell you exactly how the calculation works and do that. I'm not smart enough to do that.
And a key component of this is the core area Citizens Advisory Committee is made up of members who actually pay this fee, their business owners. And so this is something that they participate in and consent to. As Counsel Pratt said, the Core Area District Committee has approved this increase. So those business members are in support of this. And that's, I just want to get that out because some people might be like, what the heck are they talking about here? Bring up people up to speed.
And to add the context of that a little bit, I probably should went back. We didn't increase the core area tax rate for about 10 years. A few years ago, we recognized with ADA changes that we needed to come up with that we really probably should have been doing that along, would have allowed us to do some of those repairs earlier. Right now, we're following an ADA plan. We know that we've got several projects to come up that we're going to have to deal with. And it has funding allows, we'll tackle those, but that's one of the other reasons where this is coming from.
And this fund, this tax rate and the funds collected by this tax rate increase help pay for the maintenance of our lots?
Correct.
It's all the people know.
Just jump in for a little context. So a number of years ago, the Central Urban Renewal District built five lots in the downtown. And the businesses that are in the core area don't have to provide the same level of parking as, as if, if they weren't in the core area, they would have to provide parking spaces. So they don't have to provide the same number of parking spaces. And that was to encourage kind of a downtown atmosphere so that you didn't get a lot of strip malls or like big parking lots in the downtown. And so consequently, they pay into the core area to, to maintain and operate those parking lots. And they get a credit for, which is also a complicated formula that's in the ordinance. They get a credit if they provide spaces. So several businesses in the, in the core area do bring parking spaces to the table and they get credit for that as well.
Core area parking 101? We're not going to get to, we're not going to get to the 400 level where we talk about the formulas, but each of them knows what we're talking about. Any other questions, comments for Clay? All right. So discussions, Counsel Pratt.
Never mind. Go to discussion.
I was going to say, any discussions or motions?
I'd like to motion. May I go forward?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to motion that we have a first reading by title only of ordinance number 5549-21. Second?
I have a motion, a second for first reading by title only of ordinance number 5549-21. Any discussion on those motions? All right, so Counsel Pratt? Didn't hear you. All right, Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel Saco.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
And her cat. Counsel President Grimes.
I was going to say Maria's kitty cat. I was going to vote, my gosh, what a good little contender. Um, aye.
And the Chair votes aye also. Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 5549-21, an ordinance adopting the core area parking district tax rate and credit for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
I'll make a motion for a second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for second reading by title only of ordinance number 5549-21. Any discussions of those motions? All right, Counsel Pratt.
Aye.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Saco.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye also.
Ordinance number 5549-21, an ordinance adopting the core area parking district tax rate and credit for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 5549-21.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt ordinance 5549-21. Any discussions on the motions? Counsel Pratt.
Aye.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Saco.
Aye.
Counsel Hillier.
Aye.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. The ordinance is adopted. I don't have a gavel. When we get back, when we get back in person, I'll have a gavel again. Counsel Brooks.
I just want to thank you too for giving us the information. And when I think about parking lots around town and our parking lots, I really appreciate the fact that they're well maintained, well lit. I feel safe there. It's not a bunch of, I've walked around in places where, you know, my heels are going into potholes. And, and then I just want to say, that's just me. That doesn't include issues for ADA. So to make sure that everyone has access and to go in that direction, I think is, I'm just really proud to support that. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clay. We appreciate your work. All right, that, that moves us on to items removed from consent agenda. We had none. So then we now move to council communications. Is there anyone who would like to comment on anything, any council communication? Counsel Pratt.
I'd like to go back to the public comments about the term limits. I mean, I've been in council since August of 2019 and I feel like I still have a lot to learn. And I'm just kind of getting up to speed and understanding all that's involved in being on council. And I can't admit, I mean, and I see how much more is involved with being mayor. And I really think it behooves our city to have, I, I mean, I understand the reasoning for term limits and in many ways I'm in favor of that. But in, in this case, I think it's really important for our city to have someone with a knowledge base. I've seen where the connections that were discussed really have helped our cities. So I, I really feel it's important. This is still only giving someone two terms as mayor. So I guess the next step would be like, I'd like to know if anybody else would be interested in having this moved to a work session item, or future work session item.
I saw Counsel Brooks hand up as yours went up.
Well, I support that. And I, I mean, I'm still, I know Valerie's still got the floor. So I had some other stuff too, but I think that's a good idea. I think, I agree. I'm still learning all the time. And I also just have to say that it says a lot about the confidence that people have in you, Mayor. And, you know, it's been a pleasure for me to be working with you and learning from you and having a collaborative atmosphere on our council and respectful atmosphere in our council. And that stuff, I can't imagine somebody coming on as mayor without council experience or even with just a term and to build cohesiveness. It just makes a lot of sense to me. So, so I would like to learn more too about, on a, on a work session. So I do support what you're saying, Valerie. And thanks to the people that came and brought it up.
I saw Counsel Reyes's hand up.
I support the, the, yeah, having it on a work session and learn more about how that's going to look like. So yeah, I'm in favor of that as well. I, I agree. I, I'm for term limits, but I feel like, because it gives everyone an opportunity, gave me an opportunity to be where I'm at right now with the council. So I think that this would give, um, I think this will have that continuity that we started and I feel like that's really important and I want to learn more about it. So, thank you.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye, thank you. Yeah, I agree with the other councilors and I'm all for moving that to a work session. And also in regards to public comment tonight, I'm wondering about the gun range situation, if maybe that is beginning to approach a level of that also being added to council work sessions so we can talk with staff. I know some of the individual councilors have gone out there or met with community members in regards to this, but I'm not sure if we've ever sat down with them the entire council and gotten back ground briefing on what's come before and where we are. And I'm wondering if maybe time that we elevate this discussion to that level, if anyone else would have an interest in that.
Counsel Pratt.
I think that'd be great. I know Amir Bevanik, you're planning to have a visit out there and that there are some planned, whatever they're building to mitigate some of that sound. So I would agree, it would be really good for all of us to have an update on that, probably after your meeting. So we know where this is moving.
So it sounds like we've got two items we'd like to have added to a future work session. One being a potential change to the term limits and the other update on, and history of the gun club here. Actually, not here, again, state, it is not within the city limits of 12. It is an unincorporated, unincorporated Washington County, which limits our ability. But we do try to work on a good neighbor policy with the gun club. But we do have new members of the council who probably have very little exposure to the history, what's going on in the gun club. I know Sherilyn's been over this over and over as the city manager, not the first time for her. But so just show a hands on those who would be in favor of the term limits being our future work session. All right, looks like everybody, gun club. So I looked to Sherilyn about scheduling those two items. Ideally, with May 2022 coming soon and all the elections dates and timelines, if we could get the discussion on the term limits first and then the gun club after that.
Yes, Mayor, that's, that's fine. We'll schedule both of those. I, I may call on Washington County to come talk about the gun clubs since it's in their purview and... and they're the regulatory authority. Well, they're not the only regulatory authority, but they, it's not within Tuolton, so we'll talk to them.
I think that's a good idea. All right, any other? Oh, I see Counsel President Grimes and Counsel Brooks.
Go ahead, Counsel Brooks. I'm sorry, I didn't need to step on your toes or your heels.
That's okay.
Step on anything of yours.
You can step on anything of mine at any time. I just wanted to, we had a lot of, just first of all, with the, I think that both of these issues are very important issues. And I know that this, these community members are not alone in coming and it takes a lot of courage for people to come and talk about things and write and put the effort and consistency into issues like this. And I just want people to know that we hear them. And it's kind of funny sometimes because we don't communicate during when they communicate to us. So, but I just am grateful for people to bring their concerns and I want people to bring their concerns. And I feel that my job as a counselor is, is to hear from people. And, and I'm always grateful when people come and share with me and us how they are feeling and thinking about issues. The other thing I wanted to mention in this month is I wanted to say happy Pride. We talked a lot about Tuolatinos and how things have been moving and shifting. We've been having some conversations on the committee assignment group around, could we do a committee around diversity, equity and inclusion or diversity task force, something like this? So any thoughts or ideas for us? But I know that other cities around us are also doing proclamations for Juneteenth, which is coming up on June 19th. And it's something that our state legislature has passed. And I wanted to wish members, especially of the black community, happy Juneteenth and that we see you and would like to hear them. So I feel a little sad that we don't have proclamations and I know that we wait for the community. And there's part of me that feels that I personally would, I want to be reaching out to the community and saying, especially with these communities this month, happy Pride, happy Juneteenth. And these conversations are moving and shifting. And I know that this council is going to be continuing to move and shift along with them. And so I would feel bad not to say anything about that. I also really wanted to thank everybody about the B-City initiative and the progress that we've made on that. And, and it's glad to see, I'm glad to see everybody after being on vacation last time. So hi to council and city staff. It's nice to see you all.
Counsel President Grimes.
Thank you. There was two things that I, I just wanted to touch on. The first is, I want to make really clear that we, the term limits was decided by voters. And the council will not be able to change what the voter mandate was. What we're discussing is the possibility of sending for a public vote in May, a possible revision for the voters to consider to determine. I just want to be really super clear about that because, you know, that's a very important thing for voters. And I just want to make sure that residents understand that. So that's the thing that we would be changing on our own. It would be something that would, again, go to the voters. So that was the first thing. And then the second thing that I wanted to mention, and I hope Chief Steele is on this call. I think it's important to note that it's been a really trying last two weeks for our police department. And there's been some really high profile activity going on. And I just want to reiterate, number one, the professionalism and the sensitivity and the way that our police department interacts with our community is always such a huge point of pride for me. I really, really admire the way that we do that and the way that the department deals with our community members. And I also want to really say how much I appreciate the communication that we receive from the police department and from Sherilyn, when important things happen. I appreciate being in the loop and hearing what's happening. And I also appreciate the level of compassion that you guys communicate with and the tone that you set on some of these really important things. So I just want to say thank you, not only for the work that you do, but the way that you communicate with the community and with us and the tone you set for your department as always. I couldn't be more proud and I commend you on that. And I just, for the men and women that work with you and under you, you know, we recognize it's been a rough couple of weeks and you guys have done a lot of work and want to thank you for it. So, thank you. I see you now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel President Grimes. All right, with that, with those of us left here at the meeting, do have a motion to adjourn.
Somos? Second.
All right, all who favor, raise your hand, say aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.